All right, and Brian, we're going to begin. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Thursday, June 7th. All selectmen are present. Friend who is on the phone with us tonight. Our first order of business is scheduled appointments. We may vote on these. And I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I understand there was an invitation made to Mr. Wyshan of the Historical Commission, who is here. If you would like to, if you'd like to join us, feel free. I think, Mr. Shay, if you want to lead us off.
Sure. So, again, at the end of our meeting last night, when we discussed committee reappointments, I'm the one that actually expressed hesitancy in reappointing Mr. Wyshan. And others on our board wanted the opportunity to invite Michael in and meet with him before any final vote was taken. So, that's the reason that we're here. And I just want to clarify a couple of points. And first, that issue with me and this particular committee appointment is correspondence that was shared with me by an abutter to property at 28 Boston Road. And it was the correspondence with the abutter that is what's at issue with me. The 28 Boston Road property was the subject of a demolition delay, is part of our town bylaws. The abutter to the property was contacted by Mr. Wyshan, and correspondence continued between the two. And it's going to come out, the abutter that I reference are representatives of St. Anne's Church. And first, I'd like it known that, given my personal involvement with St. Anne's as a parishioner, I did contact the State Ethics Commission Attorney of the Day to discuss whether it would be necessary for me to recuse myself from tonight's discussion. I had a conversation with the Attorney of the Day, the end of which I was advised to file a 23B3 form with the Town Clerk's Office, which I have done. And I was also advised that it would be okay for me to participate in this agenda item tonight, so I will do so. And second, I just want to be clear that it's the tone and the tenor of the correspondence that was shared with me that is at issue. And a correspondence was perceived by the recipient as intimidating and threatening to the point at which the recipient questioned whether legal counsel would be required moving forward. So, I've been consistent in my term on this board that decisions of board and committee members should not be a reason for taking any action against that board or committee member. There was the case throughout the Bartolini matter, was my position as our board discussed positions on citizen petition articles for the removal of elected and appointed officials a couple of years ago. So, my decision tonight, it's no way influenced by the facts of the matter between the Historical Commission and the owner of the property at 28 Boston Road. And the action of the Historical Commission as a whole in reaching its decisions on that issue do not factor into my decision regarding reapportment of the one individual. While I will not use decisions made by board and committee commission members as a reason for removing them, not reappointing them, I do expect, and this language that I'm reading now is exactly as I read it during the Bartolini decision, that I expect that all citizens that come before boards and committees will be treated with fairness and respect. Even when confronted by residents or angry and resort to tones tactics that are inappropriate, at all times, board members, town employees need to stay above it all, act respectfully. It's not always easy to do, but in my opinion, that must be the standard. And in this case, in my opinion, the correspondence that was issued did not meet that standard. And when confronted with that 18 months ago, there was also no effort to apologize for that as well. So, again, it's the tone of the correspondence that is 100% at issue. It's not the matter between the owners at 28 Boston Road and the church, I'm sorry, and Historical Commission that factor into my decision. Hopefully, we can have a good civil dialogue tonight. And I'll turn it back over to you at this point to see how you want to proceed. Other board members were interested in talking with Mr. Wyshan, so I look forward to hearing that conversation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shay. Mr. Wyshan, you're more than welcome to join us if you'd like. It's up to you.
I certainly will.
And I'm sure, I'm sure other members may have, well, I know I will have questions and others may as well.
Great. I may defer some of your questions to our chairman, as we're also in session here in the Historical Commission.
Okay. And just before you begin, as Mr. Shay said, you know, this, the intent of this isn't to relitigate any decision that the Historical Commission has made, you know, really any decision that this board has made. It's about whether or not one individual is being reappointed. We have lots of individuals looking to be reappointed. You know, it's not uncommon to ask people to come before us and talk about it.
Although I am the only one, am I not?
So, you are the one, although, you know, we all, we looked at everyone on the board, on the sheet, and, and yes, you were asked, you were invited to come.
I'm the only one here. You were invited to come.
I'm the only one here. Well, I have, thank you. I have a prepared statement I'd like to read. Better without glasses, I think. Thank you for asking me here this evening. I understand from the reading of the last selectman's minutes and obviously from your comments, now that some of you, particularly Mr. Shay, disagree with the tone and timbre of the Commission's communications with St. Anne's, of which I was the author. I don't want to get into the specifics of that matter this evening, as it was a long, complicated, and fraught with problems. And was, in fact, part of the reason that two of our commission members later decided to resign, simply because they didn't want to spend time in such a contentious atmosphere. Let me just make two points. While some of you, one of you, may object to my tone, my word choice or phraseology, no one can question the veracity of the content or the legitimacy of the questions the Historical Commission raised over the destruction of a 120-year-old house and the construction of a development on a previously undevelopable parcel in an extremely historically sensitive area of Southborough. However, to the degree that my phrasing or word choice detracted from what is really important, the destruction of this valuable piece of historical property, I humbly apologize, because that means I have failed. If my wording obfuscated the issues, or worse, has become the issue, then we, as a commission, have failed, and this is entirely my fault. Since this contentious application, we have all received training from Town Council as to how to better handle these difficult situations. We, as a commission, have revised our applicant materials to better explain the rules and requirements of the commission, and the commission is hoping to secure secretarial help so that in the future, no one member ever again has to ride public point on such a volatile issue. I also see from the minutes of the selectman's meeting that Mrs. Faniff was curious to know as to why I wanted another term on the Southborough Historical Commission. That's a very good question, Mrs. Faniff, and one that I have asked myself repeatedly. The fact is, I was drafted, and the members of my commission and members of the public have repeatedly asked me to serve another term. If reappointed, this will be my fifth. I don't know if the current board recalls that I spent two terms on the Historical Commission in the 1990s. In my work there, you can still see every time you go down Route 9. For when a developer tried to tear down, or did tear down, the Mary Finn Farmhouse, Mary Finn of Mary Finn School fame, and build a Wendy's, I helped lead the fight to make sure that this didn't happen again. And the fact that you can see at least some trees along Route 9, and that it doesn't look like Westboro or Framingham, is owed in part to me. In my second iteration, I have been instrumental in saving the Burnett House and continue to work towards the completion of the process. I was the force behind the demolition delay bylaw, which a number of you vociferously opposed, but yet was supported by over 2/3 of our voters, as well as being the proposer of the adaptive reuse bylaw, which also passed with wide support. This is time-consuming work and thankless work, as I'm sure you well know, especially for me in an already crowded schedule. In addition to the Southborough Historical Society, which I head, I also run the Franklin Delano Roosevelt Foundation at Harvard, in addition to my business practice. But the fact of the matter is that my fellow commission members have asked, begged, pleaded cajoled, and practically threatened me to stay. And so, I have acquiesced, as there is no one else with my experience set to do this work. Even if we appoint a new board member, we still have vacancies and are always in danger of slipping under quorum. Some of you may remember that the Historical Commission was actually without a quorum for almost a year and a half fairly recently. I feel that my commitment to the Historical Commission is worthwhile, and because of the fact that there are vacancies and no one else to fill them, I have offered my services. I'm not willing to take the risk that we not have a quorum and therefore request reapportment. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Wyshan.
Thank you for reading that into the record. You've apologized publicly here to this board and to the public. Did you take the time to apologize to the adjacent abutter to the 28 Boston Road property?
I did not apologize to the abutter, nor did the board apologize. The commission apologized because we did not feel that an apology was required. Mr. Shay, and I believe Mr. Rooney, had a conversation with our chair, Joe Hubley, and at that time, he point-blank refused to demand that, you know, demand that apology. Again, this is a little strange, speaking about this when the full extent of the matter is not well-known, but I think we were justified in doing what we did. As I say, I'm sorry if the wording was considered by some too harsh. That's why I turned out not to be a diplomat, which is what I was actually trying to do.
So, you would, now that you apologized publicly, you would send them a letter of apology?
I would still appreciate the answers to the Historical Commission's questions, which we never received. And if I'm proven wrong in those questions, then I would be happy to apologize. Yes.
Oh, I haven't seen the questions.
No one's seen the questions, because this has not become a matter of public record. That is part of the issue. I'm being held to accountable to an affair that has not been really discussed. So, you know, again, I believe we have the full correspondence set that we can send to the Board of Selectmen.
No, that's all right. What I'm, I think what I'm driving at here is, the property owner of the property that was under the demolition bylaw was before you, not the adjacent piece of property, which got into the framework of the discussion, which I don't understand why, because both parties can choose to do what they wish with their properties, and the house is freestanding. So, it's unfortunate that we're here, but I'm asking you to apologize to the adjacent party. You've done it now. I think you could do it.
I, in fairness, I cannot apologize to the adjacent party, which is St. Anne's Parish, until I understand what exactly were the answers to these questions. I think they were legitimate questions. They were authorized questions by the Historical Commission. They were never answered. They have to do with why a small parcel of land was transferred to a parish insider and which circumvented the zoning laws of the town of Southborough. Now, I think if you see the full set of communications.
Well, I read your communications with Shay's property owner.
Yes, and we prepared them with a full set, which I'm not quite sure has ever really been transmitted to the Board of Selectmen. We simply attempted to ask them what had happened, and I had conversations with St. Anne, which were very amicable, in fact, about exactly what was happening. And I was requested by the chair and by the board to make these communications. I, it's not as if I went rogue here in any sort of way.
All right. Well, then, I'm requesting that you apologize, apologize to St. Anne, since you mentioned it now, for the tone of your letters.
I apologize to St. Anne's for the tone of my letters.
In writing. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Wyshan.
Will you do that?
I'll certainly consider it. I will do it.
Ms. Broschew. Okay. I have questions and comments. Based on what Mrs. Faniff just said, I just wrote down a question. What an abutter decides to do with their property, in my opinion, is not up to any board or commission or committee in this town to question. In this case, we're saying St. Anne's, we've said it out there. However, or whatever they decide to do with their property, it is their own property. As I own my own property, and I certainly wouldn't want someone questioning what I'm doing with my property if it has nothing to do, again, my understanding is your concern was with the homeowner. And I don't want to get into a big discussion on this. I just want to make a point.
No, I don't want to get into a big discussion either, but I'd like to answer your question. The mitigating factor here in that what is not particularly clear is that I remit would never normally extend to an abutter unless misrepresentations were made to the commission.
Okay. I don't, I don't want to go down that road.
Okay. Well, that's the answer as to why we were in contact with the abutter.
That's the point. The point is, the church decided and made a decision, and that was their decision to make, and not to be questioned by any board of how you chose to dispose of any of your property or not. That's just a point I'm trying to make. I found very big concern with that. What you choose to do with your property is your own right to do. Whether you found it inconsistent or not, it's their right as a property owner. So, I'm just going to leave that point out there.
But I'd like to know if Mr. Wyshan agrees with that statement you just made. I do. I don't know if you do.
I absolutely agree.
Do property owners have rights?
Mr. Kalenda.
Seriously?
Seriously.
Of course, property owners have rights, and I think.
Even in the demolition delay bylaw that you've.
Well, it's a demolition delay bylaw. It's not a demolition prohibition bylaw. And I hope we're not here to retry the demolition delay bylaw.
No.
Okay. So.
We'll save that for town meeting.
Yes, I'm sure. Yes, I absolutely agree with this, and I will go back to the fact, again, that the only reason we were in communication with St. Anne's was to clarify misstatements made by the applicant. And I, and I'm sorry, I can't, normally, we would not even, even have any, know who the abutters are. But this was a very particular case. And, you know, I, I don't, you know, I can't imagine it happening again, but I, what can I tell you? This was a question in front of every one of our commission members. I'm not the author of this inquiry.
Well, that leads me to a second question. I read through the emails that were forwarded to us, and in the email, you said that you were speaking personally as a member of the commission. Now, tonight, you're saying you were representing the commission. I went back through the minutes from August through December, and I didn't see anywhere in there where any one person was voted on or designated to be the spokesman for the commission. And again, that's a question, that's public record. Anybody could go back and check. And I did go back online and see the minutes. So, my question is, was there a vote taken by your board, your commission, excuse me, I don't mean to say board, by your commission that put one person as the designated person to speak to the abutter?
I think Mr. Hubley has to answer that question.
Please, it's just, again, I went through your minutes, so I'd like to know. That's all.
Vote no, discussion yes.
In a public meeting?
So, just the, the answer was vote no, pub, vote no, public yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And again, Michael, I think everyone sitting on this board appreciates the commitment and the contributions you've done. I have, hold you in huge regard, and I think that the concern for me was the tone. And I just, I want to go back to something before I even was elected to this board, that I actually fought the selectmen on a promise or a commitment that was made in 2010 to me. And if I veer away from that belief that I've fought for just because of someone who I know and respect, then I'm no better than the concern I had. And I still believe in the promise as strongly today as I did as that message. And I would just like to repeat and quote what the message was to me based on an issue that I had with the tone that was taken as well. And I was assured by the board in their message that courtesy, respect, and open dialogue are prerequisites for continued membership on any board, and that there's no room for compromise on this condition. A basic principle of our town philosophy is to encourage volunteerism and participation. Anything that is done to infringe on these ideals will not be tolerated, end quote. I take that to heart very seriously, because I was on the other end. Also, I gave, I've given a lot of thought into this meeting today as well, and I weighed your responses to the board, that you had, the two correspondences we had with you. I was a little concerned. We didn't have to reappoint you, but we respectfully gave you the opportunity to come and speak to us. That's what we wanted to do, based on our respect for you. I was put off at the tone and the attempt to put conditions on the discussions as to what would be read into record and what we would do, trying to direct us and our decision. I was concerned about that. I'll be honest with you. Also, a little concerning, again, was in the second note, and again, this kind of goes back to the first thing that I had said, that when you sent the second note saying you could make it, which we greatly appreciated, you also said.
Yes, I had to actually cancel my own board meeting to be here.
And I, again, it's appreciated. I think this is important to all of us, Michael. I think this is a very important discussion. But in it, that you, you said that you was, you responded, that you were directed to speak for the commission. And again, I went back through minutes, and I didn't see where any public discussions were had by the commission. Again, it's just a concern for me when we're trying to be transparent and we're trying to be open, if we're saying there's a discussion, I would have liked to have been privy or at least seen it, and the public been privy and seen it anyway.
If I may, I just.
Absolutely, please.
That's, this may be my last comment as a Historical Commission member, but that's one of the reasons that we intend to seek a raise of budget, because we have no secretarial help. And since, this was something that Town Council had advised us when we met with him in December, since we are now adjudicators of these bylaws and have responsibilities, we actually need some help. We are citizen volunteers and not official record keepers. So, to the extent that there may be lacuna in these records, I would urge that you allow us some secretarial help for the future, because obviously, we need it.
Point well taken. And again, my only point with that is if there was discussions had by the board and the board reached a decision, you should, they should have been public discussions, and I couldn't see where they were. That was my concern. I mean, at the end of the day, we're all volunteers, all of us, many that are sitting in this room tonight, we're all volunteers, and we all have the best interests of the town at heart. And I don't think anybody's disputing that with you, Michael, at all. I think it's just sometimes the tone that we take, unfortunately, we're accountable for our tone. And in dealing with the public, we have a, we require of the public, when they come to meetings and to speak, a public decorum policy. And we should expect the exact same from our boards, commissions, and committee members as well. And when a member of the public feels threatened or whatever, obviously, we have to take that into account. And I think that's why we're here, and that's why you're here. We're having an open discussion on this, which I think is a perfect way in finding a solution if there is a solution. So, I mean, I do have concerns, but I'm certainly willing to hear more of what everybody else has to say before any decisions are made. So, thank you.
Mr. Shifrin, do you have questions for Mr. Wyshan?
I'm not necessarily a question, but I just want to add that my reservation or hesitation to reappoint comes from the, again, tone and almost like interference in the transaction that was going on, and later on, blog post about Deerfoot Road. And I don't necessarily agree with everything this board does. I don't necessarily agree with everything town meeting does, but I have the utmost respect for the process that we go through and for the people that, you know, volunteer and take the time to go to the meeting. And although you're certainly qualified for the position, no doubt, I just can't see appointing someone that seems to think because of the importance of the subject matter to you and maybe to many people in town, if the decision doesn't seem to be going your way, it just seems like there's a lack of respect when that happens. And that's where my concern comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shifrin.
Regarding 135 Deerfoot Road, one of the many hats I wear is the president of the Southborough Historical Society. It's a private organization. I happen to be the president. We are an advocacy group for historic preservation. I called out three of you for not voting to send this to town meeting. I disagree with you. You disagree with me. That's the way it is. But we are respectful, and I respect you, and I actually have great admiration for all of you, even though I disagree with you heartily on many issues. We are all here to serve. But in terms of 135 Deerfoot Road, that is my role as the president of the Historical Society, is to call a spade a spade when I see a threat to preservation in Southborough. So, unfortunately, I'm called upon to wear these two hats, and that was a separate issue. Again, regarding, you know, Mr. Shifrin's comments, I do take this very seriously. I take historic preservation hugely seriously. And so, if sometimes my ardor is a little much, I apologize. But the fact of the matter is, we are losing our historic fabric at an immense rate, and that we need all hands on deck to try to preserve it.
So, are you referring to the blog posting of shame on Mrs. Kalenda Shay and Ms. Faniff?
Yes, I am, as was Mr. Shifrin.
Yeah. And are you referring to the other posting where you said, not only have these three decided on their own volition to doom one of the last remaining historic farm properties in town, but in a single vote, they have raised our taxes, crowded our classrooms, and increased infrastructure congestion. So, we did that in one full swoop, in one vote.
Yes.
All of that, all of that has now occurred with that one vote.
Yes.
You, okay, you believe that?
Yeah, and I do, and I'd like to explain why. That property is now going to have between six and eight homes on it. Each one of those homes is going to cost under $2 million, which is the threshold at which they start to actually pay taxes into the system to defray their educational costs. So, each one of those new houses is going to wind up costing the taxpayers of Southborough money in perpetuity because of educational costs, not to mention increases in congestion, not to mention increased demand on services for police, for fire, new road, plowing.
How many homes?
I, we just talked to Brendan, and I believe he was between six and eight.
Six homes is going to cause a significant increase in congestion on our roadways? Six homes?
Six homes here, six homes there.
Going to crowd our classrooms.
Yes, that's approximately 12 new, 12 new students.
12 students.
And this is one development of many.
So, my point is, Mr. Wyshan, I also am concerned about the combativeness that you seem to have towards the board that appoints you. So, you're asking for us to reappoint you, but you shame us, which you're, which is your right on social media.
Well, as you're trying to shame me now, I mean, we have a.
You do as, I am not. I'm just using your own words.
Well, well.
So, my, what I'm looking for.
I think our president would call this a witch hunt.
What I'm looking for, what I'm looking for is people who understand that, okay, yes, you have a, you have a role. The commission has an outstanding role to help preserve our town's history. We don't have an open checkbook. So, what you may want to do is run for a seat over here, because, you know, you'll see things differently when you, when you have to sit over here. We have bills to pay. You know, we cannot buy every failing barn or historic piece of property in town. It's not possible.
I understand that.
It's not feasible.
This was a strategic.
And then, when you say things like this, and which are absolutely, you've left out the fact that our own Town Council advised us against this. Our own building commissioner said that that property had to be razed to the ground.
Mr. Kalenda.
You left that out.
Every board, committee, and commission recommended to the Board of Selectmen to send this to town meeting.
Yes.
And it was not sent to town meeting, and that's what I was responding to.
And that is, that is our job, because of the very fact that I've, and you've left those pieces out. So, I get concerned about the combativeness and the one-sidedness, is that, you know, I asked you, and I know you would say yes, that the property owners have rights. Of course, yes, they do. But I get concerned about people on volunteer boards or commissions that only see things one way. And when you talk about leading the fight and the force behind, it's the combativeness that I think is, is. that I think is a challenge for me. So, do I think you're an amazing individual on historical preservation? Absolutely. I've read your blogs, I've seen it. You're good, you're really good at this stuff. I get concerned about the citizens who have to then interact with you when it's too much. You can actually, I think, you can be too much.
Let me just-
To be able to see the other side.
Let me just respond first.
Can I respond to something? One, I didn't see the blog, but thank you for mentioning my name. When this was starting to blow up, 28 Boston Road, I called an emergency meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Committee with the chairman of the historical commission, with the owner of the property, to continue the discussion. We're in the middle of reselling another unit. We didn't have the immediate funds. We're looking for delays. We also found out what it would cost for the structural repairs of the building. So, we were still working on it. And I don't know if you knew that that meeting even happened, but there was an emergency-
That meeting was at my suggestion.
But it happened.
Yes, I know that. But this was also nine months down the process.
But this is saying that we are working together, maybe not as fast as some, but we are looking at other alternatives also, and we're being cooperative.
Well, you know, to that point-
But I'm not going to debate that. That's not even-
No, no, to that point, but I just want to-
Conversation that we're trying to have.
In terms of cooperation, this is the one, out of all the demolition delay permits that we've had, this is the only one that we have had problems with, the only one. And, in fact, most of them, we've passed and said, "Fine, go do what you need to do. We have no authority here. We don't need to interfere here." For the few that have come up in front of us, I'm thinking of a property on East Main Street, where we're working with the owner. He asked permission to tear down the house. Our one request was that he work with us to improve the facade of the design, and he's agreed to do that. And we've said that if he will do that, then we will let him out early of the nine months, because that is our option to do. We can allow owners out if we decide for whatever reason that they don't need to spend the few time there. We have sent a letter to Brendan Holmes, saying that we agree that, given the state of the structure and their desire to subdivide that property in the way that they are, that the home is probably not salvageable. However, the barn is. It's a mortise and tenon barn. It's built like Lego logs. You can take it apart in the same way that it was put together, except in reverse order. And we've asked them to work with us to potentially relocate that barn, and we're exploring possibilities of perhaps at Chestnut Hill or other locations, because it is a phenomenal structure. You know, this issue aside, we, I, our commission, has been working assiduously with owners, property owners, quietly and without issue at all, since this came to the fore. And as a matter of fact, a number of properties that would have otherwise been torn down have been saved because of this demolition delay bylaw, where the owners have decided to renovate them instead. And with this adaptive reuse coming, that's even a bigger incentive. You know, again, I am sorry that this has been so contentious. This was never my intention. I don't like this level of strife. It is thankless work. It's very hard. It's hard on you, it's hard on me, it's hard on my commission members. This is very stressful for us. So, however, I would urge you to look at our track record. It's pretty good.
The tone has to change, Mike.
I don't intend to ever write anything again. We're not, we're getting a secretary, and we're not writing anything again. As I said, we have changed entirely our policies. You also understand that you guys sent us off, and I don't mean you particularly, but we never had a chance to sit down with town council until this past December to even learn how to deal with these laws. Most boards and commissions are given training well in advance, and this was something that came fairly late in the game, after, again, this had occurred, that we were able to sit down with Aldo for a full day and learn about the rules and regulations of becoming a board. This is new to us. So, you know, to the degree that we've erred, I, again, I apologize. And I, again, I take full responsibility for this. I wrote these letters, it was me. This, however, was the thoughts and feelings of the commission, but I wrote them. So, if I need to fall on my sword for this, I will.
Michael, can I ask, you keep mentioning that policies were changed. Can you just touch on that briefly? Not a big, long explanation, which is brief.
No, I apologize.
So, we understand when you say that, what you mean.
We voted yes, when was it, yesterday? Yesterday? I don't know, we've had so many meetings lately. We voted yesterday that we will run these communications all through the chair, and that we will not do what we had previously done, which is essentially assign people as point people, and often that point person was me, to do a lot of these issues, and that we were actively in conversations today with Vanessa Hale about figuring out what this would cost and to actually get secretarial help, so that we can formalize this process. Again, the, this won't, whether I'm here or not, this particular iteration won't happen again.
Any final questions for Mr. Wyshan? Mr. Putre, do you want to, you have some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Wyshan.
Thank you. And Mr. Shifrin, just let us know if you have anything as well, sir, please.
No, I'm good. Thank you. Sir. Good evening, and welcome for, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. My name is Bill Putre, and I was the owner of 28 Boston Road and the petitioner for that project. I'm here tonight to provide my insight and just to recap my interactions with Mr. Wyshan as a member of the historical commission. I asked the town, asked the board to not reappoint Mr. Wyshan. As you may recall, I requested a demolition permit for 28 Boston Road. Per the town bylaw, I met with the members of the historic commission for the purpose of explaining my wishes for the six-acre parcel. I explained my goal was to donate land to St. Anne's Parish, to donate an additional 55% of the land to be permanently protected as open space. With regards to the structure, my goal was to ask for a demolition permit and to determine the structural integrity of the house, to see if it could be utilized in a planned development. It was later determined that the structural integrity of the house was compromised, and it would be best for the project to continue with demolition. After many discussions, I was asked to comply with the bylaw, although the commission could not provide accurate records as to the age of the house, nor of any historical significance. Regardless, I complied with the finding, which cost me several thousand dollars, but I'm not here to talk about the finding. My project was ultimately approved unanimously by the planning board, and the land was, in fact, donated to the church, as originally planned, and more than three acres were permanently designated and protected as open space. In November of 2016, Mr. Wyshan sent an email to the leaders of my church, St. Anne's, accusing me of lying on several occasions. And if you haven't seen the emails, I have them. They're more than tone, they're more than tenor. He accused me of lying. After he accused me of lying, he then accused Deacon Paul of lying and threatened the church that he was going to take a response from them and put it for the public record and invite the press. Again, I have it all here for you. While Mr. Wyshan sent the email stating he was doing so personally, the signature line was from the town of Southborough. If you look at the bottom of the signature line, it's from the town of Southborough. Mr. Wyshan knew I had an agreement with the church, and this slander, attempted intimidation, and tortuous interference led me to be solicited by two separate attorneys, stating that I had a significant case against him and the town. Despite my frustration and anger, I was certainly not going to sue the town that I love. Several members of this board approached me after these events, apologizing on behalf of the town for the unacceptable behavior. I was told that he was asked to apologize, which he refused to do. In fact, at the next historical commission meeting, which I recorded, Mr. Wyshan stated, quote, "I know you tried to get me off the board. Ha ha, still here." I have that recording, and two witnesses were with me, if that's something you want to see, two witnesses from the real estate firm who attended. This clearly shows, in my opinion, that he was not going to comply with the board's wishes to apologize, and actually mocked them by saying, "Ha ha, still here." Today, we all understand and agree that government behaving badly is simply not acceptable. As an elected or appointed official, you commit to serve your town, your state, your country, in a respectful and honorable way, understanding that ultimately, you represent the people. We cannot allow any elected or appointed official to disrespect its residents, its churches, or the town, and we cannot allow any elected or appointed official to create financial liability to the town or its people. We also know, as we have seen in this town, it's very difficult, once you appoint or elect somebody, to have that person removed. I ask this without a horse in the race, as this is the only property I have developed in the town. I ask this as a concerned citizen to make sure that nobody else is treated the way I was treated. In summary, I urge you to not reappoint Mr. Wyshan. I have all the documented information stated above for you, to see if you haven't seen it. So, if anyone hasn't seen these emails and think it's only tenor and tone and not threats and not calling somebody a liar, I'm willing to provide those to you. Many people in my church have already seen them, and I'm willing to put them as part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Putre.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Have we received enough?
Yes.
Can, does the chair of-
We did receive a letter from the chair, and so we all have that. If there's anything in deference to the chair, if he wants to say anything in addition, we do have that, and the commission would like to see Michael reappointed.
Do we have all of the emails, though?
Sure. He said he would make those available if needed. Do you want them now, or do you-
I would like to see, briefly run through them.
Let's see. Let me get here. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Shifrin, in just a moment, we're going to go ahead and vote on, I think this is the only, Mr. Wyshan is correct, the only one that we had some questions on, I think. Does any board member have any other questions on any other board or committee member that wants to be reappointed?
No.
Okay. All right. I'll wait for Ms. Faniff. Okay. All right. I will make a motion that we move to remove Mr. Wyshan's name from the reappointment list, that we not reappoint him. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can you just restate the motion? Dan, I couldn't hear.
Brian, the motion was that we remove Mr. Wyshan's name from the list of people who wish to be reappointed, and that we not reappoint him as a member of the historical commission. It was seconded by Mr. Shay. And now, if we have any further discussions, we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. Any further? No further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote.
Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. No. No, it's a board, it's a board, it's a board choice. It's, oh, I'm sorry, no, ma'am. It's a board, these are board. We do have, in deference to Mr. Hubley, if he had something in addition that he wanted to stay as chairman, we're more than happy to hear from him, of course. So, Mr. Shifrin, we're in discussion. The motion's been made and seconded, but Mr. Hubley has some comments. Mr. Hubley?
Joe Hubley, chairman of the historical commission. We've all sent emails that we regret. I understand that. It's a different role we live in today, and I'm sure Michael regrets that email. As chairman, I don't like to see this kind of tension between an applicant and the commission. I disagree with Mr. Putre's comments about certain things that took place and transpired, especially at our first meeting. I don't think I want to get into the entire case here, because we all, we don't have time for that, and I'm sure you don't want to sit through that. However, I think that his comments were just as well pointed. I feel that the comments from the board are a little stiff. I've been in this town a long, long time, and I've never recalled someone so much has been put on the hot seat for comments that were made either on a blog or an email that he regrets sending. He did apologize. I hope that the board takes that into consideration. We have established that communications goes through the chair, communications that we review as a commission, so that things like this don't happen. We were inexperienced when we first started. This was a very difficult applicant process for this particular property, and I'm sure Bill would agree with me. And I don't want to go through that again. So, we had training. Michael attended the training. He's a great asset to this commission and this town. He's done a lot of work for the 84 Main Street preservation restriction, which we need to manage. I don't see where the punishment fits the crime here. It's, I think it's, I think the board is taking an email that many of us have sent. We've all regret sending those emails, but I don't think this warrants a non-reappointment. Again, Michael has done a lot of work for this town, a lot of work for the commission, and done some very wonderful things, and I would not want to see him not reappointed to the commission. I ask that the board maybe consider a trial period, so to speak, a time that if there's without incident, he'll be reappointed or reappoint him for a specific term. I don't, I don't believe, again, that he should be removed. So, I ask the board to consider that before you go vote something that may have long-term consequences, and none of us want to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubley. Ms. Faniff?
If I could ask the chair to withdraw that motion and make another motion for reappointment, so that we can have further discussion?
I'm happy to withdraw the motion in what's-
Oh, that chair.
All right. Sorry. I'll make a motion to consider Mr. Wyshan for reappointment to the historical commission. It needs a second.
Second. For discussion.
For discussion purposes. What Mr. Hubley just said was something I think we should consider. However, I do want to make a point here. There has been discussions in the past with former ZBA members at the time of reappointment, such as we're having tonight, which are uncomfortable, and that reappointment didn't happen. So, it has happened, and we don't like it, and we don't like being over here. If reappointment is considered, I think it should be a probational reappointment, that the individual writes a letter to the abutting property owners before the appointment takes effect. This board sees that apology, and we will revisit it in six months. Mr. Wysham was willing to apologize, apologize in writing. I mean, he'd have to say that this evening, that he's going to do that. Will you write a letter of apology to St. Anne's Parish? I'll make a motion to consider Mr. Weishand for reappointment to the Historical Commission. It needs a second.
Second. For discussion.
For discussion purposes. What Mr. Hubley just said was something I think we should consider. However, I do want to make, make a point here. There has been discussions in the past with former ZBA members at the time of reappointment, such as we're having tonight, which are uncomfortable, and that reappointment didn't happen. So it has happened, and we don't like it, and we don't like being over here. If reappointment is considered, I think it should be a probational reappointment, that the individual writes a letter to the abutting property owners before the appointment takes effect. This Board sees that apology, and we will revisit it in six months. Mr. Weishand was willing to apologize, apologize in writing. I mean, he'd have to say that this evening, that he's going to do that. Will you write a letter of apology to St. Anne's Parish? This Board will review it.
I've already said that I would write a letter of apology for my tone and tenor to St. Anne's Parish.
And, and to the property owner as well. For the tone.
For the tone.
And that the appointment would be probational, as suggested by the Chair of your committee, for a period, and that you have no further contact with the property owner at 28 Boston Post Road or St. Anne's Church in regards to this property.
I haven't had any since.
Nobody wants going forward either.
I certainly don't intend to.
So, while I--
With those conditions.
Okay. So, my motion was withdrawn, so we get further discussion. Ms. Vanniff made one. It was seconded. It would, it will require a third vote, which I am not willing to give. But, so, it would either come from Mr. Schiffern or Mr. Shea.
Assuming Ms. Brascio is in favor of--
Assuming Ms. Brascio is also in favor of Ms. Vanniff's motion. That's a good point.
Right, well--
It was seconded for discussion, but there was no vote. That's correct.
I do see merit in what Mrs. Vanniff said. With changed policies and a probationary period, I would be open, but I would obviously like to hear what the balance of the Board's position on this is as well.
My position remains. Yep, go ahead, Mr. Schiffern.
I mean, respectfully, I think that that is a very overly complicated potential solution. In my mind, it is not about the emails specifically and apologies, written or not. It's about the idea that I think Mr. Weishand still has today, that either as a Historical Commission member, or Preservation Member, or Chair, that it's the role or responsibility to take the, I don't know, win at all costs, or call a, state a, state approach, that I just, I don't agree with. You know, not every issue or matter, even if it's important, is going to be a win. Sometimes it's a loss, and you move on to the next issue. And that's, to me, what the problem is. I would suggest Dan's motion, and maybe the answer is just a brief, after several years of service, maybe just a brief break. And, you know, after someone else fills the spot, and another spot comes up, maybe we can have this discussion again. But the idea that there's a probationary period, and communications have to be filtered, and there's no contact with property owners after that, I just think is a little weird. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schiffern. Do I understand you are a no vote?
I would be a no vote to the probationary motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schiffern. So, motion's been made, it's been seconded, Mr. Schiffern's a no vote, Mr. Kalinda is a no vote, Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea is a no vote.
So the motion fails. We can, if you want to vote, you two as well, I mean, it does fail, but you don't have to if you don't want to. Okay. All right. So the motion, I'll reinstitute my original motion to remove Mr. Weishand's name from the list of those asking to be reappointed, and that he not be reappointed to the Historical Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call vote. Kalinda, aye.
Shea, aye.
Mr. Schiffern?
Schiffern, yes.
Ms. Brascio? Motion carries five, nothing. I will also make a motion that everyone, that the remaining names on the list all be reappointed to the term stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the remaining list?
All of them green.
Yes. Yes, ma'am. So, Mr. Schiffern, we're now moving to reappoint everyone on the list that was provided to us, and it's in our packets in the green. Motion's been made and seconded. Is this a roll call vote? Kalinda, aye.
Shea, aye.
Shea, aye. Vanniff, aye.
Schiffern, aye.
Okay. Those all passed. Thank you. All right. All right. So that concludes the scheduled appointments. Mr. Schiffern, do you still have some more time with us? And if so, is there any particular item on the agenda that you would like to see addressed?
If we could do fayville, I'd just like to hear that discussion.
Okay. Yep. Is that all right? Other board members, is that all right? So let's do fayville. Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have in your packets the, one response that was received when the town issued an RFP for the disposition of Fayville Hall. There were, the committee that was put together to take a look at the disposition, the things that were important, you know, to be put in the RFP. Obviously, price was one, maintaining the facade was another, and trying to maintain some level of parking for the playground across the street on the vacant parcel was another piece. You only did receive one bid from Bartolini Builders, and there are a number of conditions in the bid, and I have had several comments from some of you offline. Feel free to make them again tonight, but some of the conditions deal with affordable units. Some of them deal with transferring affordable units from other projects to this project, and there may be some things in there that, and obviously, each condition needs to be satisfied in order for this bid to be accepted and for the transaction to be concluded. So, the, my thought that I want, that I think the Board may want to consider, we do have 120 days in which to make a decision, we are still within that period, is that the Board may want to send the response to Planning, as well as to Shopsey, to have them take a look at this and give their comments back as to the ability for these conditions to be satisfied. Because if we know upfront that there is an issue with the condition not happening, that means that the bid isn't going to, isn't going to work, and there's really no, no point in the Board accepting it.
I think that's a great idea. Other members? Mr. Schiffern, are you okay with that?
No, I think that's great. I think that we actually got more responses than I thought we would, so I think we're on the, I think we're on the right track, and with their input and cooperation, hopefully we can work something out.
All right. I agree. Okay. All right. So, Mr. Purple, you'll--
I will take care of that, and then bring it back as soon as we have, I'll let them know that we are on a timetable, and try and get that information back as quickly as possible.
All right.
Mr. Purple, just to be clear, it's going to Planning Board and Shopsey both?
Yes. Yes. Is there any, is, is that, I believe that should cover the things that were mentioned, so, okay.
I also would like to move up, I know we have a couple of members here, so, under the other matters, number four, review of Municipal Technology Committee IT Policies, correct?
Correct. Mr. Laflame is here.
Sir. Mr. Laflame.
Our IT Director.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you for having me tonight. So, before you, are four policies that I have drafted, looking back at the policies that are on record with the town. They go back about eight years, and they're just up for renewal. Those policies do not address things like social media and website publishing, which have really blossomed in those eight years. So, they've gone before the MTC for initial review, and they do have in their language of annual review by that committee, and any changes would be brought back to you as needed.
Questions for Mr. Laflame?
How about a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you did a really great job on them. I actually took the time to read, read them, and there was a lot in there, and you did a great job, so thank you.
Thank you. I agree.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one item? So, and not to belabor the point, but this was, this was one of Tom's goals, to come up with these policies. He had the goal done very timely, but it was during that transition period when it was the Technology Committee, but not yet the Bylaw Committee. And then, you know, we thought that it made sense to hold off on these until the committee was in place, and so the Technology Committee could weigh in on them, which Tom did, brought them to the committee, and, and they felt that they should bring them forward to you for approval. Again, these are policies, updating existing policies, as, as Tom said, they're bringing them current. There's something that's going to have to be, you know, looked at, probably on an annual basis, just to ensure that there's not things in here that need to be updated, but, but it does bring the policies current with, with the times.
Excellent. And I would move that we approve them. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment?
Just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we, has other, have any of the departments or committees seen this?
No, they haven't.
Or comment?
In part, I kind of put that to the chicken and the egg.
Okay.
Do I distribute it, and then bring it to you for approval, or vice versa? Certainly, if there are any feedback from departments as we're distributing, you know, I'll bring it to MTC and bring it back as needed.
Okay. As long as we get back any feedback that might be of concern, to make us aware of it, anyway.
Perfect. All right. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote. Kalinda, aye.
Shea, aye.
Brascio, aye.
Vanniff, aye.
Schiffern? Mr. Schiffern? We may have lost him.
We lost him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Laflame. Ms. Galligan? Let's go to, you've got a few things for us. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but can we do St. Mark's first?
Please. Yes. Yes.
So, you remember, we had talked about, oh, yeah, so, Rob Kuklewicz? I got it right? For St. Mark's, who's the business manager. He's here to just talk, I'd probably talk about a little bit of the intersection that we had talked about previously at a meeting. Having St. Mark's, they're interested in, at the corner of St. Mark's Street and Route 85, actually changing the aesthetics there, doing some work to get the grass to grow, stonewall work. And they did put in, he sent me that plan, which is in your packet, that they had a landscape architect do for them, and I actually think it's a really nice plan, and we just, they basically need the permission to do that work. I don't know if--
And you have no issues--
Anything you want to add to that?
You have no issues with the plan?
No, not at all. They've left space for the sidewalk. They're actually, I like the idea that they're adding a stonewall instead of moving the stonewall. I think it'll work out better. I think, I think it'll be a, a great way to make that little corner look nicer.
Questions? Anyone?
I have one question. I wasn't out at the meeting when this was first discussed. We're not turning over any of the property in a lease agreement.
No.
In case we need to do something else at that intersection.
Correct. We would do, for Aldo is saying that we would do like a license so that they could do the work, and then they could maintain it.
All right. So we're really doing a beautification project?
Yes.
It might have been easier to understand it that way, for everyone, that we're not turning land over to a private school. It's no different than if we're beautifying anyplace else in town.
Correct.
Okay. If that's--
It's just it's not on our dime, thankfully.
Do you need a vote from us, or just nodding of heads, or--
I believe the, a vote to give us the authority to work with Aldo and St. Mark's to do that license.
So moved. Is there a second? Yes, sir.
Second.
Mr. Shea?
Just one other question as well. So I know that area is used currently as all sorts of haphazard parking, and do you have a sense for where those vehicles will now be going to park?
Do you need a microphone?
Yep.
Definitely. Thanks for letting us bring this to you guys. So, we probably think there are about 10 to 12 cars that can park in that space, and we feel that, that we'll be able to accommodate those cars either in our own student, existing student parking lot, which is across the street next to our facility basketball court building, the MFAK building, or also there's a space that's a triangle just south of that location that a lot of people park, and that can hold 20 to 30 or more cars. It's a grass area that's there, just south, it's a triangle that is, that butts that location, but is just south of that. I think the other thing important to note was that, at the last meeting, I remember one of the members talked about making sure the wall was far enough back from the road that if the town ever wanted to put in a sidewalk, they could. And so, that was one of the reasons why we put such, such a detailed plan together, was so that we could show you that the stonewall that we're proposing, which would be in line aesthetically with the existing stone walls nearby, is far enough back that, that a sidewalk could be placed there if the town so desired in the future. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Galligan. Next, Ms. Galligan.
So, most of the rest is the paving bid and the MAPC award for both of those, all that set of bids for MAPC and the paving. I just like the vote so that we can get those contracts in place and signed.
Any other questions for Ms. Galligan and her requests? Ms. Vanniff?
On the Main Street, the night work, 85?
Oh, that, I haven't asked that one yet.
What hours is the night?
Okay. Can you award my two, my contracts first? Sorry.
Do they have any interplay?
Start with the-- Because that's not, that's not, that's a different contract. I, so what I'm looking for is the--
We might be able to get through all of them all at once if you tell--
Okay, if you want to do it that way.
Yeah.
Sorry, that works. Okay, so the night work, I talked to the contractor, we had a pre-construction. We're looking at doing Monday, July 9th. It'll be from 8:00 PM to 4:00 AM, an eight-hour shift, and then they'll come back on Wednesday during a regular workday. That is weather permitting, that is equipment failure not ensuing, I mean, and then it would just delay, but the intent is that they get that hookup done on--
It's one day.
On, right. It'll be one day, and it'll be July 9th, 8:00, 8:00 PM to 4:00 AM. We'll send letters to everybody in the immediate area, let them know that's happening. We'll specifically send to the people that they know they're off, and, and obviously the contractor has to let them know that the exact day their water's going to be off.
All right. So if a resident needs to get out of their home because of their occupation, there'll be provisions in there, if they're on call all the time?
Yes. And, and most of, like I said, that will just be one night, and, and that won't be in front of anyone's house.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other further questions on any of her items? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
So, before you escape, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There was one item that I think probably didn't require a vote, that was your Main Street update?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yes. This is short, unfortunately. So, the project was advertised by DOT on May 12th. The actual bid date, so they do it a little different, so the day the plans are available for people to take for bid is going to be January, oh, January, July 10th. And usually, from bid, I mean, from the original advertised date to notice to proceed, when they could start, is about six months. So, we're looking at a November, a November notice to proceed. So at that point, and that's actually probably assuming everything goes well, considering that we are doing, it's, it's the state. But once we get that, then we'll be able to actually get, you know, a, like a Gantt chart and everything, so we can actually start getting people informed of where they're starting, how they're going to do it. I've been working on a way to keep people informed. I think I'm going to take Sam's help with that, and put some, almost like a weekly update, just so people have some idea of what's happening, in which areas.
So this may work out well.
It, it does, it gives us a lot of time before they really start anything. They might get signs out, they might do some test pits, I would assume some trees will come down, and I just want to remind everybody, every time I talk about it, it's going to look horrible for a couple-- probably seasons until it's done, done, and then it'll look great. So parts will look good early, but a lot of it's going to look horrifying.
All righty. Thank you for that wonderful update.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, welcome.
Karen.
Adrian Peters, Chair Advisory. I do want to just make a comment and a request. Next time, when I look at, at what's in the package, Ms. Carrigan, she did a good job saying where the funds are coming from. But I think it's important for transparency, for us to understand and everybody to see, is to actually say how many dollars, the dollars that's coming from the various areas. Let me give you an example. Funding for this bid is from the annual town meeting, general capital articles, some work of the woodwork and nearly schools is being funded through the school, some. And then we say, and work at the Fayetteville Ground is being funded through Recreation Revolving Fund and CPC funds. If you in the future just want to say how much money is coming from where and how it's done, then it's easier for us, it gives us transparency and we can see where what's moving. And it's just a request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to talk to this or not? Okay. All right. Anything else for Ms. Galligan that we need to bring up?
So the one other item that I think, I think Ms. Galligan could help us with under other matters properly before the board would be item number two, which is the request to transfer the Breakneck Hill Conservation Land Water Usage to, sorry, sorry. Transfer, item number two under other matters, request to transfer the Breakneck Hill Conservation Land Water Usage to the town obligation. Ms. Galligan and I have been having conversations about this. Normally, properties that are town-owned, the water does get, you know, the water usage does get transfers into the town accounts. And we've been talking about how this could be done. There have been issues, if you recall, last year, I believe, there was, there was the issue with the, with the excessive water usage up there. And the bill was adjusted so that we made sure that we at least got the amount of water that made us whole with the MWRA. And, and the bill was reduced. And in, in talking, in talking this out with her, you know, there still seems to be some extensive leaking that is happening from the distribution point past the meter. So this is not a metering issue. This is the fact that you've got a ton of hoses and a ton of splitters and everything else. And a lot of hands that are involved in, in using, using the water up there. There's a lot of water being lost. And if you wanted to, Ms. Galligan's got a lovely little video on her phone, which, you know, shows, you know, the water that is being lost up there when the system is turned on. So I, I think that this is something that may require us to put a little bit more work into this and to figure out how we can put something in place and put some fences around this, so to speak, so that we're not taking on something that when, that then the town is asking itself to pay for this lost water. So, I don't know what you, what you may be able to add to this or whether, you know, the board's got any questions. But I did want to bring this forward. Ms. Rosenbloom had, had brought this to us. I thought it was a valid request. We had, I did speak with Beth about this. And I said, I think that there are some things that need to be fixed first before the town assumes the ownership of it.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Galligan, I don't know how much you've looked into this. I, I understand the problem. I actually had a meeting with the garden and Beth regarding this a while back on the meter. What I would like to see is, if you could come up with a suggestion as to how we could fix this. I mean, it is town land through the stewardship. And that's kind of what I'm looking for. I don't know if you've given any thought to what we could do to fix this?
Yes, actually. And so when they had, because it's been two years in a row that they had the high water readings. And what they have is kind of like if you picture like an old pump that you do that too, right? And so you lift, you lift up the handle and that lets the water out. And they have a splitter that goes into four, and each of the four has a two on it, and a couple of twos have another two. So that's so that you can get like nine hoses running out and then of course, and they're trying, because I mean, you can see they've got the tape on it to try to keep those tight, but almost every single, first the blue thing, the pump leaks. Then you have each of those, each of those attachments leaks and each of the hoses leak. And however, when they, I said, gee, you know, you should test the system. Testing to the blue works, you know, to, to the pump handle works fine. So, so that underground piece is actually in one piece. And honestly, I think what the, the thing that would need to be done, and I don't know where the funds for this come from, is to basically attach to that and run, run some underground like irrigation hoses and bring it up like you do at the cemetery, where we have the spigots at the cemetery that then can be used. Because when it's off, it's off. And the, and the hoses, you know, you're, if you're only using one hoses, but all the rest of the hoses are charged and they're all leaking. And it's, it's not a lot of water, but it does add up so very fast. And that's really, I, so I have a concern that, that we would be taking on a $5,000 to $8,000 bill each summer that, that we aren't necessarily, that they're not really using that much water and it's just wasting it. Which is what their concern is too, and I understand that. And I, we do pay for the irrigation and watering on all other town grounds. So I can understand that it's not a bad thing to take over. It's just we need to improve the system before we do that.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, I think you need to come back with a plan.
I don't, is that something CPC can fund? Do you, does anyone know that?
Well, why don't we look at a plan and a cost?
Okay.
And then, and then we can bring that back to the board and, and then we can see, you know, have a conversation with Ms. Gillespie and see if it's something CPC, you know, could fund that improvement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. I think you should.
All right. What do we, we've been bouncing around a little bit, so. Are we under the chairman's report?
We're getting things done.
Or do we have anyone else we need to?
You're under the chairman's report. Question is, do you want her to weigh in?
She's still here. Before she leaves, Ms. Galligan, do you have any comments for us on the Main Street Design Working Group? And, because we have a, you know, a, committee charges are under review. Do you have any comments?
So, let me, yeah, so let me, let me frame it a little bit, not better, but differently.
Differently. Probably better.
So, at the last meeting, when like, when you, when you were not here, there was a discussion, I believe Mrs. Faniff had brought this up in looking at the board and committee reappointments. Are there any committees that we can, that we no longer need? And, and, you know, there was a couple that, that were listed and that were discussed. And I also had mentioned that there may be a committee or two, that if we're going to keep them, we really need to readjust their charge. Because things have changed. And one of those is the Main Street Working Group. Obviously, the intent is for that group to stay in place and be a conduit from the residents and the businesses to the Board of Selectmen as the project moves forward. And, but I don't know that the charge accurately reflects that now as we enter into the construction phase of that project. And so at the last meeting, the board had wanted that brought back to you so that you could take a look at that and see if there was some tweaking that needed to be done.
So if members had an opportunity to review and offer tweaks, we want to, on any of these, do we want to take those, these as a first or second read and then come back at our next meeting with, if anyone has edits? That would be my suggestion.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. So let's do that for A through D. All right?
Well, I don't, I, I don't know if that's a fair assessment for A through D. I think it's a fair assessment for D. And, and possibly for C, but you've got, but the, and possibly for C, but, but Fayetteville Hall Disposition Committee, they've completed their work.
And they're not going to have any role in?
No.
Okay, so we'll take off A.
And then the Southborough Town Meeting Review Committee.
They gave their-
Gave their final report. They've concluded.
Well, and then the special town meeting spoke, so.
The special town meeting has now changed the date.
So we'll take off B. We'll just do C and D.
So we've made those-
So we'll, we'll dispense with A and B.
Actually, if I could just ask, if for some reason we choose not to move forward with the Fayetteville Hall bid as received, and I have no idea how we're going to move on it, would we want, would this group still need to be involved in that? Or would we just reissue the RFP? Would we rework the RFP? Would they need to be involved in that?
So, before, quite honestly, to protect the integrity of the bid process, you need to make a decision on the response that's in front of you. So I really don't know that we should be having discussions about, let's assume this doesn't work out, what's our next step? This committee was set up to take a look at the property and what they felt would be important to go in the RFP document. And I don't, you know, and like I said, the RFP document has been issued. And, and if, you know, depending on what you choose to do with the bid that's in front of you. Like I said, we have a tough time getting rid of committees once we create them. So I, it's, it would be up to you as to whether you would want to, to keep that or not. But I, I think they've, they've dispensed with their charge. They really don't have a charge at this point.
Okay.
So, that's, it's up to, you can always create them again.
They've completed, they've completed their phase.
They've completed their work.
All right. I'm good.
Okay. All right, anything further on A through D? No.
So I think you, you would need a motion then to-
So move to dispense with the Fayetteville Hall Disposition Committee? Dissolve and dissolve the Southborough Town Meeting Review Committee. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then for C and D, the board will review those and bring those back for the 6/19 meeting.
Correct. Okay. All right. Are we now on to chairman's report?
Yes, we are.
I have none. I wasn't here the last meeting, but I do want to point out what the historical significance of today is. D-Day. Okay. And the, and Operation Overlord, the landings at Normandy. And, and I haven't been at a board meeting since Memorial Day. It was an amazing event. And I know Mr. Shay was here, Ms. Broscha was here. I don't think-
Mr. Shifrin was here Monday.
Mr. Shifrin, yep. And I think Ms. Faniff was, we didn't see her this particular time. But special recognition was made to the Faniff family for the amazing, the beautiful, you know, grounds that we hold these ceremonies on and the All Wars Memorial. And so, Ms. Faniff, to you and your husband, your continued efforts on that, on behalf of all of our veterans, thank you.
I'd like to add something to the flower beds that have been planted in the town common. Majority of the flowers have been taken from veterans' homes in these towns or homes that have been demolished. We've transplanted them with the permission of the property owners. So that's why over the, a number of years, they're multiplying, but they are, and to represent some of our veterans in our community.
Well done. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Town Administrator Report. Mr. Purple.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of quick items. I want to let the board know that we did a, we did department head training yesterday with John Wartman. He, it was his first trip back to Southborough since his transition. Said it felt a little weird. But he is a, he's an excellent presenter, he's an excellent facilitator. And he's done a lot of work with the departments in the past. And so the, the purpose of the training was effective strategies for reviews, feedback and conflict, talking about performance evaluations, so things of that nature. Ms. Rosenbloom from Personnel Board was in attendance. And I think from the training, there will be discussions moving forward between the Personnel Board and the departments as to how we can better, how we can create a better tool for performance evaluations, as well as, Mrs. Faniff will be pleased to hear this, we've had this discussion many times, the, how to better deal with the process of evaluations and what has been the very public nature of these discussions of personnel issues. And so there are, you know, several issues. There is a, there was a, a recent Supreme Judicial Court decision regarding performance evaluation process. I have a, I think it's a five-page letter from, from Labor Council as to how that impacts this process. So I just wanted to let you know, these are going to be ongoing discussions. And I'm looking forward to working with Personnel Board and the departments to come up with, to come up with a process and a form that everyone agrees with that we can move forward and make this, you know, make some improvements of this process. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up this evening, so based on the special town meeting that we just had, and I'm hoping that we're out of town meeting season, right? So, yeah, well, it's what's underneath that counts, right? So, we have been taking a look at a draft schedule for, you know, for how things would look if we're implementing the bylaw. Now, you know, obviously the clerk needs to submit any change, any bylaw changes to the Attorney General. Attorney General then approves them. Attorney General has, you know, quite a bit of time that they can take. I believe it's 90 days in order to approve these bylaws. By the time the bylaws may come back from the Attorney General's office, we could be about to begin our process. So I'm going to be making a recommendation to the board as to when I think we should establish our Saturday in March and then our subsequent town meeting week for the bylaw. I think we need to take steps to assume the bylaw will be approved by the Attorney General's office and we will, you know, move forward in that fashion. And I'll probably, between now and the next meeting, be taking a look with town clerk, moderator, town council, advisory chair, just to make sure that these dates are going to line up. If we are to work within the confines of the bylaw and establish a town meeting week in March, it appears that we would be beginning town meeting on Saturday, March 23rd. There is a Saturday, the last Saturday in March is March 30th. However, that really does not establish town meeting week in March, because town meeting week would essentially be in April. So, anyway, I wanted to let you know that we are putting that schedule together and we'll be bringing that to you at, at your next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Purple. All right. Under the consent agenda, we have, does anyone want to hold any of the minutes? I'm good with them. And I would move that we approve the meeting minutes from May 1, May 15 and May 22. We also accept a $5,000 donation to the DPW from the Friends of Southborough Recreation towards Fayetteville Playground Work. We accept a $10,000 donation from St. Mark's School towards the fire truck. Again, a hearty thank you to St. Mark's.
Sitting in the back of the room still, so it's easy to hear.
Thank you, sir. We also accept a $35,000 donation also from St. Mark's as an annual pilot payment. Again, thank you, sir. And a one-day alcohol license times three. Request for Chestnut Hill Farm fundraiser, June 22, 23 and 24. Is there a second? Any discussion?
So, I'm sorry, so one item on that, on that last piece on Chestnut Hill Farm, it is three separate one-day licenses. That is allowable by the state. Ms. Esposito did have a conversation with the police chief. There is a detail officer for the first night on Friday. They're going to see how it goes. They may then request a detail officer for the subsequent evenings, depending, but they'll try it the first night. They decide they don't need it, then they will not require it for the next two. And there is agreement from the applicant on that.
Excellent.
And is there a maximum number of one-day licenses that they could apply for? Do we know? I know that they've applied for three, three in a row here. If it, I'm just questioning if it goes well, do they-
The answer is yes. It's not on the paper in front of me, but it's like, I, I think it's probably, you know, it's more than a dozen.
Okay.
In, in, in one calendar year.
Sir.
I, I am part of the event.
Please, thank you very much. I was guessing by the sweatshirt, but I wasn't sure.
I just came from an event over, a private event over in Marlboro, so sorry for the heavy branding.
Why do I know? It's awesome. So just your name, sir?
My name is John Thompson.
Maybe representing?
Notch Brewing Company. We're the event partners with the trustees. We have a series of, of events at trustees' properties around the Commonwealth, sort of throughout the summer. To the point of the, the limit on the licenses, state law says it's 30 per person, per municipality, per year. So.
So more than 12?
Yes. Yeah. And these are the only three dates we're, we're looking at at Chestnut Hill right now. They, we had originally planned to, to do these later on in the fall, but they had a construction project have some delays. So they wanted to move it up earlier in the season, so. earlier in the season. So, that's, that's why we're doing it now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your patience tonight as well.
Oh, my pleasure. This is, this is part of what I do, so.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Then, all in favor of, because we already did number two of one, three, four, five, and six. Is there a second? Yep. Yes?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Review of staff reappointments for fiscal year 2019. Mr. Purple?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have that in my packet. Do you? It is in the packet? Okay. So, no, no, I'm fine as long, like I said, this is, these are the staff, so in your packet, it's one page, no color. There is the list of the committee, of the staff appointments. So, you've taken care of the boards and committees. These are the staff appointments for fiscal nineteen. Again, it's a much smaller list. It's fairly straightforward. Again, this is brought to you under Other Matters, so that you could take a look at it this evening, see if you had any questions, any comments, and we could, you know, adjust those. If you want to, you know, you do have the ability to vote on them. If you wanted to do them tonight, it's completely up to you. I agree, they're very straightforward. They're, there's really nothing, there's nothing out of the ordinary here. So, but otherwise, they'll be put on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
We do it now while we're here? Same. Any questions on it? All right. All, all the motion to approve, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Purple.
Mr. Chairman, one other item, since we were talking about the, this would, would have been under my report for the, the payments from St. Mark's. If you recall, the last meeting, we approved the hundred thousand dollar donation from, from Fayette School for the Public Safety Project. In conversations with the headmaster and the business manager, they're going to do that similar to how they did the, the ladder truck. So, that ladder truck was ten thousand dollars a year for ten years. That ten years expires next May, two thousand nineteen. So, in May of two thousand twenty, they will begin ten thousand dollars a year for ten years towards the principal and interest payments for the public safety facility.
Excellent.
We have twenty-nine years of payments, so that will, that, that fits into that schedule.
Very much appreciated.
So, I just wanted to let you know that that was how that was going to be coming.
Thank you, sir. Their generosity is, is very much appreciated. Thank you. Okay. I think that is it for ours? Yes, ma'am?
Under other business?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we there? Can I just briefly, just a couple of quick things? I had, I just want to make the board aware, and I'd like to have this for a discussion at a later point. But I've spoken to Westboro, their Selectmen's Office, to see, based on their vacancies on their boards and committees, it's much lower than ours. So, I was trying to get an idea of some things we could do. And I also spoke to Terry from SAM Tonight. And I'd like to come back to the board with some type of proposition to do, maybe like a two-minute spot to, you know, call people out that can run, it can go up on YouTube, it can be shared on social media, you know, just asking people to come and letting them know what positions are open, and maybe even having something scroll on the screen before meetings and stuff that gives them information, or even an informational night. So, see, there are just some things. I'm just trying to think of, because we have so many vacancies, what we could do differently than we're doing. So, there's that. And then, I would like the board to consider it at a future date, possibly, again, bringing up a decorum process for boards and committees. And then, lastly, I just wanted to mention, and this isn't a other business, but I wanted to mention Officer Nyvert. I, I know we-
Yes, please do.
Either that or you, feel free. You can certainly.
No, no, double story.
So, Officer Nyvert had, for anybody that may not know that's watching, he was on patrol at twelve forty-three in the morning this past weekend. And he went up through Framingham to do the turnaround. And on his way back into Southborough, the Safeway Gas Station on Route Nine, he saw a car there, and the gas station was closed. And he pulled in, and he witnessed a non-responsive man bleeding from the nose. And he administered two cans of Narcan, and then he also put on an ambulance mask, as well as two other, Detective McCarthy and, I'm, I'm remiss, thank you, John Officer, thank you, responded as well. And they kept this gentleman alive until Framingham Fire Department came, and he was responsive when they left. So, Officer Nyvert is up for a saving life award, as well as he got a nice letter of commendation from the Framingham Police Department. So, I would just like to say, on behalf of the board, kudos once again to our police department. On top of keeping us all safe, they've saved another life in Framingham. So, thank you.
Well said, Ms. Brashe. We talk about the incredible work that our police and fire professionals do in saving lives, and this is an absolute outstanding example of Officer Nyvert doing just that.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for that. All right. Any public comment? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.